I'd like to call to order the Carver Select Board Agenda for February 16, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to lead us in the community prayer?
I'll grab it.
Thank you, Mr. Bob.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office, and that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responder in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you. It's now time for citizens' participation. Is there anyone here who would like to participate at this time? Seeing no movement to the microphone. The next item on the agenda is appointments to the Agricultural Commission. Dick Ward and Elizabeth Murphy. And I believe they have something in the packet from both of them. Is there a motion and a second by anyone?
I make a motion where you approve both applicants.
Okay, thank you. Motion and second. Any discussion?
Are these both reappointments?
Sorry?
These both reappointments?
Mr. Ward is a reappointment. I'm not sure about Ms. Murphy. I'm not, I'm just not sure. Do you guys know?
Elizabeth Murphy's a new appointment.
She's a new appointment.
She's here.
Great, thank you. Hi, oh, hi, thank you. Would you like to come forward? I didn't know you were here.
That's okay, unless you have questions.
Well, you're welcome to come if you want. Chat up your stable.
Oh, it's okay.
Just give your name and address and tell us a little something.
I'm Elizabeth Murphy. I'm at 4 East Street in Middleborough. Our stable's name is Legacy Stable. It's actually in Carver, though. It's been my grandparents' stable since the '70s. My husband and I are, well, I'm third generation, and my husband's second-generation horseman. We like being back in the town, and I love the agricultural part of it, and I'd like to help in any way that I can, so I figured that, you know, I had some extra time, and I would join if that was okay.
That's great. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Anyone?
I'm just, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hoffman. I mean, Mr. Townsend. I know who you are.
Ms. Murphy, do you live in Middleborough?
So, the property's actually in Carver. We just have a Middleborough address.
Okay, but you live in Carver?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it's 12 acres, 10 of it is Carver with all the buildings, and the other two open acres is Middleborough.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in a weird area, right near Edoville Railroad, and we're on the other side of the Rochester Bridge there.
Okay.
And it's just a very odd way. It's always been like that. It used to be Wareham Address when my grandparents first moved here, and now, thank goodness, it's just two towns.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, thank you very much for applying. I actually searched your property for tax records and whatnot.
Isn't it, yeah.
So, just to make sure. But thank you for applying, I do appreciate that. And we actually had other, like, in Plimpton has the same issue with part of their properties on Carver, and the house is actually in Plimpton, and vice versa, so that's kind of normal around this neighborhood. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I'll give a step forward, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks very much. Mrs. Bogart?
How did you find out about the opening?
On Facebook.
Ha, see you guys? I've been pushing that for, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're just looking that up. And thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion and a second to appoint Dick Ward and Elizabeth Murphy, reappoint Mr. Ward, and to appoint Ms. Murphy to the Agricultural Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Constable reappointments, Gregory S. Cammon and Robert A. Terrell. Mrs. Weston has informed me that they will not be able to be here tonight. However, they have been constables before, and they are both members of the Constables What would the Board like to do? They both submitted something to, I believe, in the packet.
I'll make a motion to reappoint both gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. The motion and the second has been made. Any further discussion? Mr. Belbin?
How much money have these two constables brought into our town since they've been appointed? Do we have that or not? Anyone? No? How many services have they provided to the town here? I think, before we start appointing people to constables, all right, or reappointing them, we should really have an evaluation of how much services they're actually providing to our town, and are they actively out there? As a former constable myself, I went out to all the lawyers around here, and my services were limited to two, but even still, I brought money back into the town, and I think we need to know what those are before we appoint, reappoint these two constables, to find out what they've actually done within the past three years. If they've not been productive within our town, then we have to look at, in my opinion, for other options. So, I kind of ask that we not appoint these until we get the information of how much money they brought into a town, how many services they've done within our town, and also, we have to look at what trainings they've had. They are part of two separate constable associations in the town and the state of Massachusetts, Mass Bay and Mass Constable Associations, they're two separate institutions. So, I think that we should wait to find out that information.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. So, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Mr. Hoffman?
For this reappointment, is this a three-year?
Do we know that?
Yes, all constables are three-years.
I believe it is. Mm-hmm.
And how many constables? We have two?
There's only three allowed in the town, and part of the issue here is that neither one of these guys are Carver residents. I have to say that also. I mean, you would think a constable would be here in town. And when that's got to, from being elected to appointed, like I said, my application got put aside, along with another resident in town, for three other people. So, I think that we should be looking at Carver residents for constables to work in the town of Carver.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Bogart?
I think all the points that Bob is bringing up are pretty valid, so I don't think it would hurt to wait until the next meeting to maybe get the answers that he asked for and do some more thinking, especially since they're not here. So, I think he's reasonable.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I agree.
You agree? Okay, so do you want to withdraw your motion then?
I will withdraw my motion.
I guess we could table this till we can get the information? Is that a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of tabling the reappointment to constable?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to table the reappointment till we get further information. Approval of the annual town election warrant. Mr. LaFond?
I can't approve it, Madam Chair.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're one step ahead of me here. This is basically ministerial act by the Board. This is the, he outlines, well, states the dates of the election, as well as all the terms that are open and available for those to run. Again, it's somewhat ministerial in that this must be voted by the Board and posted by constable in various locations.
So, these are the positions that are on the ballot that we're voting on?
That is correct. These have been provided by the town clerk.
These are not town meeting warrant articles?
No, no, nothing completely separate.
Thank you. And do we actually have a constable who can post these?
Well, the police can do it.
Okay.
Get the police to do it, yes.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Belbin?
Regarding the warrant here, all right, whose responsibility is it to create the warrant? Is it the Board of Selectmen, or is it the town clerk?
The election warrant, I believe, is created by the town clerk.
Yes, the town clerk provides this to us, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And she did that a while ago. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the annual town election warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor? I mean, sorry, it passes unanimously, thank you. Discussion and possible vote of resident and non-resident beach parking sticker cost, and if it will be annual or two-year. Mr. LaFond, is that something you would like to inform us of?
Well, I think currently, they are, are they two-years? They're not two-years now, are they? So, the thought process is, is to save a little bit of administrative burden and make them two-year stickers instead of the one.
Okay.
And of course, as you know, the historically, I don't know how far it was in the past that the dump sticker, hate to use that word, dump, was separated from the beach sticker. Current fee, as you know, hasn't changed. When was the last time that changed? Elaine, do you recall? I think it's been a place a long time.
In town or out of town?
In town.
In town, it was several years ago.
Yeah. So, realistically, setting some rate and make, and a two-year renewal would be helpful for us. Whatever the rate is, that's all on you, but even the current rate, I don't think is an issue. It's just, really just ensuring that we can change it to a two-year sticker.
Okay, and what is the current rate?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, yeah.
Ten dollars for two-years?
Ten dollars. Ten dollars for one-year.
Okay. All right.
But you have your comparison here that Elaine put together, so as to what you believe is reasonable.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend?
Through you, Mr. LaFond, is there currently a rate for out-of-town? Or there are?
There is, and again, I have to defer to Elaine on the out-of-town.
The out-of-town rate changed a few years ago from $30 a year to $60 a year because we were doing a two-year sticker, so we just changed it to a one-year sticker.
Okay. So, it's $60 for one-year?
Right.
Right.
Mr. Belbin?
Do we know how many stickers were sold last year? Well, they were combination correct for, you know, they were beach and transfer station. What about out-of-town stickers? Do we know how many of those were sold?
Approximately 20 to 25 per year is what we sell.
All right.
It's typically the same people every year.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Hoffman?
A question. The fees that we collect from these stickers, where do they, what does it, where do they go, and what do they get used for?
Those go to the general fund. So, they just become part of the town's overall revenue stream. There's no revolving fund here. Doesn't become part of the, doesn't become part of the recreation revolving fund, for instance. It's not like that. It's just general revenue to the top.
So, it's not used for maintenance for the beaches or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No.
But having that money probably helps with maintenance. I mean, want to think of it that way.
Indirectly, it's.
Well, yeah, everything that goes into the coffers is.
Well, I just think we maybe have to look at it a little different this year, because 100% of this fee will go towards the beaches, where before it was the transfer station and the beaches.
Sure, it's true.
So, what was the breakdown? I guess you really can't break it down because it.
We need a little history. Right, need a little history. And realistically, in the future, if the Board wishes to, or the town wishes to establish a revolving fund just for that purpose, then it may be worth doing. But I think, you know, a year of history at least would be helpful. If we're putting $2,000 in the treasury, that's not going to be much help to the DPW, but I think we have a little bit to learn still.
I think it would be an interesting idea if something were looked at possibly in the future, maybe this money could go into some type of revolving fund to provide lifeguards or something like that at the beach.
Or realistically, there's already a revolving fund to recreation, and this could just become.
Maybe it could just be diverted.
It could just be, the current revolving fund could be amended to include this revenue.
Do you think, would it be better to do a one-year, to see how it goes after a year, or could two-years be a better test or not?
Yeah.
Sample size, I should say.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, the goal of a two-year would just be, basically be for the convenience of both the staff as well as the public. But there's absolutely no reason why we can't keep it at one-year if the Board wants to see what history that is derived from this.
Something would be interesting, I thought it asked before the breakdown, it'd be interesting to see what, how many people actually buy the sticker for the beach. Because I know when the transfer station was before the town meetings, some people mentioned that, that they didn't, they bought the sticker but not for the transfer station, just for the beach.
Right.
So, it'd be interesting to see what that, how many actually use it for the beach.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it would be an interesting thought process, and maybe that would give us some time to think about whether we should change where the monies go or not.
Now, that being said, a $10 fee is a little bit slight. But if you wish to adjust that, again, realistically, this isn't making a break in the municipal budget, but I think what's fair, and to the extent that, you know, a $10 fee, I don't know that's going to give you the history you're going to want, because people who buy something at $10 may not buy something at $30. I don't know. So, I think you, if you're looking to get a good idea as to who's going to buy these, how many people are going to buy them, then I think you should increase the fee to some extent right now, so we're working with reasonable numbers next year when we try to project what we may be looking to do with a revolving fund.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Belbin?
Also, if we can get from the Police Department how many tickets were issued or warnings for people for illegal parking at the beaches, I think that would also help us where we're at for that, of how many people are using the parking lot when they're not being paid, because that also has to take into account. I personally feel, actually, Rick, how much does it cost for them to process one application for a sticker? I mean, the sticker itself is, the sticker itself is what, like 20 cents, 30 cents?
You're only talking about a few minutes. This is not a huge administrative burden.
Right, but I'm just saying is that we have to look at that as if we're going to do a one-year sticker fee, all right, to gain that information for a year, we just need to know that that sticker cost is paying for the service. So, is a $10 sticker fee going to pay for that service being provided by the town?
Sure. I think $10 certainly would cover the administrative, you know, a sticker fee itself, the material as well as, you know, the administrative efforts to process that. That's not, we're not talking about an onerous task, but I think to the extent that you want to look beyond the administrative efforts into a larger picture as to what does it actually cost to operate the beaches, that, we're into a different category there. Now, we've got to do a little bit of math to see, again, between police, public works, you know, the sticker should be $100. Who knows? I'm just, but if that's something, if that's something you're interested in, we could certainly derive something that includes the broader care of the pond number.
And I think that's, Rick, the issue is that we really need to know a figure amount of how much does it cost to run, to maintain those beaches and ponds, parking lots and everything? How much does that cost per year? And the fees for that service needs to be compensated through the sticker costs. So, and that's my feeling, is that if there's a service being provided to the town to update something, then we have to do it. Or we turn around and say, guess what? We pay high enough taxes already, why do we have a sticker at all, fee at all? Because we're already paying for that out of our pocket. So, I mean.
There's no right or wrong, Bob. It's just a matter of what the Board prefers. You know, if it becomes a piece of a revolving fund, well, as you know, a revolving fund is intended to cover the complete cost of the service provided. As just general fund revenue, that's not necessarily the intent. So, really, again, this isn't the kind of money that's going to make a break in municipal budget, but it may be helpful on a smaller scale, you know, for a recreation program, if that's a consideration. So, like I said, Bob, there's no right or wrong, it's just what is your pleasure? Do you want to take a little more time, you know, over the course of this year, set a higher fee, and see what kind of interest that provides?
Mrs. Bogart?
Okay, I agree with the idea of the revolving account, because if the money's coming in because of the beach, I think it should go out for the beaches. But because this is such a year of change, you know, we said some people were buying the transfer station sticker just to go to the beach. Well, there's probably people who bought the transfer station sticker that never went to the beach. So, I think it would be a fairly reasonable gauge to just leave the prices where they're at and see how many people are actually interested in going to the beach, because, like Rick said, it's a nominal number, so going from $10 to $20 next year, where if someone wants to go to the beach, they'll pay the $20, but let's not raise it this year. Let's just see what has changed. Who was really buying the sticker, for the transfer station, for the beach, or both? So, I would recommend we just leave the fees the same, make it good for one year, and then come back next year and see what the numbers really were. And then that gives time to see if the administration and stuff changes. But I don't, I don't see a strong enough reason to increase the fees right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Townsend?
I guess a couple, first of all, I agree with Ms. Bogart. So, I think doing that for the year and getting a gauge on exactly who's buying beach stickers is a good idea. But I guess a couple of questions for Mr. LaFond as well. First of all, is it possible to break out the DPW budget to find out how much they're paying to clean up the beach? Is that even possible?
We could get some estimate, I think, especially during the, you know, the summer season, the amount of time that, you know, there's multiple times a week where there's rubbish picked up, where the beaches are cleaned up, leveled, et cetera. So, that's probably not going to be a difficult number to get. I mean, it's just a matter of labor, labor and equipment.
Okay, and I guess my second question is, if down the road, we decided that we wanted to divert this money into the Recreation Department revolving fund, what would that take?
That would simply be a matter of a vote of town meeting.
Okay.
To amend the revenue, the citation of the revenue that goes into the revolving fund.
Okay, so that's something we have to bring to town meeting next year?
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
Could I answer part of that question?
Excuse me?
Can I answer part of that question?
Yes.
I did speak to the Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance. I did do a breakdown at the bottom of your sheet. He was unable to put a cost to it because it's so nominal. He basically said the trash runs for every single beach and pond area is done as part of their regular route. So, in the summer, they're doing their regular trash pickup route, and then just adding on the pond. So, it's not like they're taking people, making a special trip, and then going to the dump on a special trip. He said the sanding and grading of the beaches is done once at the beginning of the season on each one, which again, is nominal because it's only done once, and it doesn't necessarily take all day. He said there's no cost to the sand because they use leftover sand. And he said he's more than happy to come in and speak with you to this if you want him to, but he said he was unable to put a cost to it because nothing is necessarily, you know, ordered specifically to repair the beach.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Weston.
You know, only two things I would point out. Number one, this is the first year, keep in mind, that we're actually paying for our trash to be disposed of, so there will be some additional costs there. And I do believe that, and, you know, Elaine did a good job of breaking this out, there's always a way to make, to assign some sort of cost structure to a personnel function. Certainly, I can understand that John Woods prefers that, understands this is seemingly nominal, and it may be nominal. On the other hand, that is still a service that is provided by the town that's directed towards a specific population and not necessarily the population at large, so we could certainly work to do a little deeper on that, but again, the point, the main point is that trash is no longer, it's no longer freebie. We have to specifically pay for that now, and that might change the game a little bit. So, we're happy to look at that, but, you know, I would agree, obviously, with John Woods, it's not going to be an extreme amount. Whether or not, speaking to the police chief, he's able to quantify some of their efforts, that may be a cost that might be a little more substantial, probably still not the kind of cost that's going to keep people from buying a sticker.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. Is anybody else? Mr. Hoffman?
I agree with what Janet mentioned. I think we shouldn't go up on, especially this past year, we shouldn't probably go up on the fee, to leave it at the same, and do it for one year so we can't get a better feel. Again, it's the first time we're doing this, so I feel more comfortable doing a one-year.
Okay.
I'll take this down. Doing a one-year sticker fee at the $10 price.
So, is that a motion, Mr. Hoffman?
I will make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Motion and second to leave the cost at $10 and make it annual till next year.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend?
There's one suggestion that we also need to include an out-of-town.
Correct.
Sticker cost in that motion. So, do you want to leave the out-of-town the same as well?
That would be jackhammer.
Yeah.
So, the out-of-town is $60, correct? Is that what it was?
Yes.
For one year or two years?
One year.
Just the one?
One year, yes.
And that was beach-only, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is that an amended motion to include non-resident beach parking sticker costs as well? Very well, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will follow up with Chief Duffley, just to see if he has any comments regarding the potential costs.
Thank you for that. So, the motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, review of Chapter 3 of our town bylaws, which is the Town Administrator Bylaw. This was a proposal made by Mr. Belbin. Mr. Belbin, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I sent this all to you guys, so you can review it prior to discussion here. Strikeouts are strikeouts, reds are changes or additions. And did everyone get a chance to read this, go through it? So, under 3311, "Select Board May Appoint an interim Town Administrator if the need arises." A. And did everyone get a chance to read this, go through it? So, under 3-1, 3-3-1-1, "Select Board May Appoint an Interim Town Administrator If the Need arises. A subcommittee will negotiate terms of a contract and voted on by the Select Board. The Select Board shall appoint a full-time town administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee." Any questions upon that? Just go through each one.
Yes, so I, I have one, Bob. The first sentence says, "The Select Board May Appoint an interim town administrator if the need arises." The third sentence says, "Select Board Shall Appoint a Full-Time Interim Town Administrator or Full-Time Town Administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee." So, I think they're contradictory statements. The first one says, "We can appoint an interim town administrator if the need arises." Doesn't mention a screening committee. But then it goes on to say that we need a screening committee. I'm not arguing...
We need a screening committee for a full-time active town administrator.
Well, it says full-time interim.
Or an interim when you don't need, so...
No, it's, what you wrote was, "Select Board Shall Appoint a Full-Time Interim Town Administrator or Full-Time Town Administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee." The word interim is in red, so presumably that you added that.
Right. I added the interim town administrator because we needed something in writing that says that it's the Board of Selectmen has the right to do that. All right? There were questions prior about, is it authorized by the Board of Selectmen to hire a interim town administrator?
No, no, and I'm not arguing that the content of what you're suggesting...
Right.
I'm talking about the third sentence. Either we can appoint the interim all by ourselves without a screening committee, or we can't. The third sentence says we have to do it with a screening committee. The first sentence says we can just do it.
Well, the third sentence says, "The Select Board Shall Appoint a Full-Time Town Administrator."
No, it says full-time interim. Yes, it does, Bob.
Yeah.
It does right here.
Did I print the wrong one out?
Yeah, maybe.
The red, it's your...
I printed my wrong one out, I'm sorry.
Oh.
That was my original one here. I'll use the one in here, the computer, sorry.
That's okay. So, you're scratching that, that word interim in the third sentence?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, this was my third option at this. I apologize. You're right, I did put interim town administrator. Why I did that, I don't know. So...
What's being changed right now? I'm lost.
All right. So, the first part is, "The Select Board May Appoint an interim town administrator." Well, I know why I did this. I did that so we had the option, whether, if you guys like the first part of the language, fine. If you don't, then we use the second part. So, if we want to, I gave the two options, that's what it was. So, the first part is, "The Select Board May Appoint an interim town administrator if need arises." Okay? And a subcommittee will negotiate the terms of that, voted on by the Select Board. That's the first part. If you want that one, then fine. All right? Then the second one was the change that I did to our existing language, where "The Select Board Shall Appoint a Full-Time Interim Town Administrator or Full-Time Town Administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee." So, if we want to do a screening committee for both of them, we have that option. If you don't, we just do the first one. So, that's what I did. I gave the two options in one. I'm sorry, I apologize, I should have wrote that down. Does anybody have any suggestions on either way?
It's really two...
Mr. Hoffman, go ahead.
No, you're good.
Go ahead. I guess so, there's real, on this 3.3.1.1.
Yeah.
Are we addressing both the interim town administrator and the full-time town administrator?
No, this is just the interim town administrator.
Okay. So, if I, if I, if I agreed with the first sentence that's in red?
Yeah.
The rest of it, I could just...
We'll just scratch right out, the rest of it out.
Okay.
I gave options.
But there's, there's nothing that says anything about the full-time town administrator, correct?
The next one, "The Select Board Shall Appoint the Town Administrator to serve in for three years." That's the one that comes into play.
It doesn't say anything about a screening committee or anything like that, correct?
It does in 3.3.1.1.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be just if we, if we just did that first line, I'm sorry, the first two sentences, which talk about the, which talk about the interim town administrator. And if we crossed out the last, the third line, so 3.3.1.1 is interim town administrator, and 3.3.1.2 would be the full-time town administrator.
Okay.
Right?
Oh, okay.
Is that...
Right.
Is it, I mean, is it better to have two separate?
Two separate for interim and a town administrator? Yes.
Probably less confusing.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Bogart.
One of the first things I did when I got appointed was take an MMA webinar about appointing a town administrator. And it was eye-opening. And one of the very first things said, and it had town administrators from around the state and just different roles, they said, "The most important," I wrote it down, "The most important thing that a Select Board member can do is appoint a town administrator." And that struck me. And then talked during the webinar, turned to strategies to doing that. And there was a lot of discussion about using a screening committee. And the presenters talked about getting a diverse screening committee, but you don't want one too large either. So, my takeaway from that was that it is important to use a screening committee when you appoint a town manager or administrator. In my opinion, no matter which one, whether it's an interim, full-time, part-time, or just the regular town administrator. In my opinion, it's important to have a screening committee involved in any portion of it. It's just a matter of what the screening committee is comprised of. But it was a big takeaway from that, and my first jump into the MMA world. So, I would like to see a screening committee involved in the appointing of any type of town administrator. What language this needs with the point ones and point twos, I don't know. But it seemed that that was very important.
Mr. Belvin, would you like to continue with your?
Yeah, sure. So, like I said, that first part is all about appointing the interim town administrator, a subcommittee to negotiate the contract of it. And if we want to put a screening committee for both the interim and the town administrator, I think that should be something that we vote upon and have a separate vote if we're going to do this. So, basically, I have to say is, are we willing to go forward and put this forward to the voters? It, I don't want to turn around and go through all this and then find out, well, we don't want to really do it and whatnot. All right? So, are we really interested in making some changes to this or not? I think that's going to be my first question because that's, this is just my thoughts I put on paper. Nobody else, like I said, this is put out there before, so. I guess that's my question to my fellow board members. Before we go forward with anything else, are you guys really interested in making changes to the Town Administrator Bylaw?
Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question. The way it is right now, there is nothing that's addressing an interim town administrator?
Correct.
So, what, Bob, you want to introduce is, if the case arises, like, again, now there'll be something written on how to address the interim town administrator? That's been what you're trying to do here, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I agree with that. Just how we have to go about it. Like Jen said, we definitely need a screening committee, I think, for that as well. So, Chief, so my answer to you, Bob, yes, I'm in favor of making a change.
Okay. Anyone else? I mean, like I said, I, it's got to be, you guys really all have to agree or disagree or whatnot, and, I mean, I'll go through it all if you want, no problem. I don't want to waste time, but I also want to make sure that everyone's satisfied with what's put out there before we put it out to the voters.
Yeah.
Mrs. Bogart.
I, I am on board with the changes you suggested. They all seemed reasonable. The only question I have for you is, why did you change the five years of experience down to three? Everything else you wrote, I mean, I'm, it's great. I think I'd like to see this move forward. Just curious about the five to three.
It increases the applicants that come in.
Okay.
It gives us options to say, okay, because also with less experience, you also have less pay that you could offer too. For somebody that may have been a town administrator for a few years, all right, may not be at the same caliber and pace though as someone who's been it for 10, 12, 15 years. So, it gives flexibility in that also. And like I said, the screening committee can turn around and say, gee, I kind of like how he handles himself and whatnot. And experience is great, but sometimes personality is part of it too.
Well, I like this. I'd just like to see the language cleaned up, but, yeah.
Okay.
I support you and this.
I, if I may, I actually thought that we should leave it at five years. I don't, I understand your point that it opens up the pool, but I don't know why you would want someone who has been doing this for less than five years. I mean, it's not an easy job, and it seems like the more experienced, the better. That's just my feeling. I just assume increase it, frankly.
Well, we could have somebody that has a really strong financial background, all right, and then turn around, well, they've only been, they've really never been a town administrator before, but they were an administrator for something else. All right? They may have worked for the school system, all right, dealing with that as a business manager or something like, on that terms point. So, that's why I put it out there and gave that opportunity, reducing it. Like I said, it's all about how we want to present it and put it out there, but I just changed it to three. If you want to keep it at five, that's fine, I have no problem with that, it just opened up the pool.
I would, I would actually like to, if we are going to go through with this, change 3.3.2.1 by keeping it at five years and just get rid of 3.3.2.2, which gives you an option of someone who has had no experience whatsoever in public or business administration and simply has a bachelor's degree. I mean, I, I don't mean to insult anyone who doesn't have these things, but don't we deserve better? That's kind of my feeling. Don't we deserve someone who's really put in the time and has a master's? That's just my, my thought on that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Townsend.
Just a couple of things I want to point out. First of all, on 3.3.1.1, I have no issues with the screening committee. I think screening committees are a good idea. The only thing I would point out is sometimes when you need to appoint an interim town administrator, you may need to appoint one relatively quickly if you have a town administrator that's leaving. So, you maybe, I don't know, maybe we'd have to think about some wording, maybe we ought to have the ability to appoint, I don't know, someone for six months or something like that without a screening committee, just so we don't, we aren't left without a town administrator?
Correct. Well, that was the situation we were in, actually.
It is. So, I think that's something we may have to think about and work some language on. And then we jump down to 3.1, forgive me, I lost my spot here, 3.3.1.2, where we talk about the term of the contract.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, that locks us into a three-year contract. I would like to see the Select Board left with some flexibility when we negotiate a contract because we may have issues, we may find someone we really like, who knows what the situation may be, but I hate to be locked in, and I hate to lock future Select Boards into being able to only negotiate a three-year contract. I think we need some flexibility there.
Well, can I respond to that?
You may, Mr. Belvin.
So, my thought process on the three-year contract is that it's a three-year contract, that's it. The issue we came in prior is that we had a contract, and then every year it got renegotiated, every year it got renegotiated, every year it got renegotiated. And that's something, if you have a contract for three years, that's your contract for three years. That's my feeling, cut and dry. You work for that contract, and two and a half years down the road, we turn around, we sit down, we'll negotiate another three-year contract with you. Okay?
So, if I may interrupt, I think there's a solution to this. Mr. Townsend wants to see the flexibility. I agree with that. But I think that the issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, the issue that you're talking about was that salary got renegotiated every year.
Correct.
Inside the contract. Maybe that's where what we should leave. Your added sentence, "Salary shall not be renegotiated yearly."
Right.
But not limit the Select Board.
No, I have no issues with that.
Because as Mark said, we're limiting not just ourselves, but future boards. And there may be someone they think is, you know, really good for five years.
I just think you need the flexibility to be able to negotiate a contract. This takes away a lot of flexibility.
It does. And I, I think that salary renegotiation, I know that we were both on, on the board during that period, and that was something that probably, that I thought should not happen either. So, maybe that's the issue that is mainly concerning you here.
So, is, is there a law against contracts longer than three years?
No, there isn't.
So...
No.
So, we did three to five, or no more than five years, or no more than four years, or whatever, that there is a limit that we have in place for the contract. If we want to go to five, that's fine, we can change that over. I have no problem with that either.
And again, I'm not, I don't think I'd normally be in favor of a five-year contract. I just think we need to give boards some flexibility when they're negotiating. That's, that's my only point here.
So, up to five years?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Bogart.
Could I propose the idea that a contract term, like the length, not be renegotiated or extended until the last year of the current contract? So, if you get a three-year contract or a five-year contract, in year number two, you're not starting your five years over again. But that you can't talk about extending your contract until the last year of the one that you're in.
Yes, I believe that was an issue we had discussed.
Yeah, so I'd like to see that language. If you're given a contract, you don't get an annual extension on it.
Yep. So, not extend the contract until the last year of said contract?
Can it be extended until the last year of the contract?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Oh, and then one point to the screening committee. This, it's a town in central Mass, and another one who talked, had the, like, abrupt interim instance where they had to, you know, they were kind of left in the dust. And I forget which town it was, there were two of them, but one of them, the assistant town administrator stepped in temporarily, and in another one, the police chief actually stepped in temporarily too, while the screening committee could do their thing. So, there, there were screening committees involved in every example they cited. It was just finding someone already in the community to take over the reins temporarily. So, maybe that won't work in every community, but I wouldn't want to rule it out because it has been successful in other places. And I wish I knew the towns and had the, the examples, but other communities did succeed with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Okay, so moving on to 3-3-2-1, that's been moved up to five years, is that, do I have that correct?
Yeah.
And do we get rid of 3-3-2-2, which would be my preference? I just don't think we should go backwards on, why shouldn't we try to get the best that we can? And I guess it's my feeling, but I don't know how everyone else feels on that. Mr. Townsend?
I guess, I guess my feeling on that is, that's why you have a screening committee, so they can bring forward the best qualified applicants. And if they feel, for whatever the reason, that somebody maybe with a little less experience one way, but a lot more in another, another area, would be the best applicant, then they, then they bring them forward. So, I, I guess I have no, no problem lowering that, lowering that threshold a little bit because I think that's why you have a screening committee, to go through the applicants.
And you're okay with lowering it to three years?
I'm okay, maybe we could order a compromise of four, but I guess, I guess that's why I'm, I think you have a screening committee, is so that they can review the applicants and, and bring forward the best applicants.
Okay.
I have no problem with the four.
Moving on, looks like Section 3-3-3-4 is the next one. "The Town Administrator Shall Devote Full-Time to the Office and shall not hold any other public office elected or appointed, nor engage in any business or occupation..." public office elected or appointed, nor engage in any business or occupation during such service. Volunteering is exempt." And Mr. Belbin, you would like to get rid of unless such action is approved in advance by the select board.
Yeah, I just, I think if we pay someone to be our town administrator, they should devote their full-time to that office.
Mm-hmm.
And no other business opportunity that they have on a sideline. That way, if they come in and they already have a business that they're running, then they have to understand that they're not gonna be able to do that. They have to make that opportunity and that choice. And the volunteering is exempt. I think that speaks highly upon the person taking on that position, that they volunteer, that that's actually a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Any other thoughts on that, on anyone? Okay. Looks like the next one is section 3.4.4.4. "The town administrator will keep a calendar of all meetings and time away from his office, including vacations, sick, personal days. This calendar shall be available to all select board members." Mr. Belbin.
Yeah, I did this because the town administrator would be away from his post of where he's at for other meetings or whatnot. We should be able to go ahead and look at the calendar and say, okay, he's away doing this on this day. It's a way to keep accountability. And then also, we understand that how many days they're actually taking for their vacation time, for their sick time, for the personal days, that we can keep a record of that, and we can keep track of that, too. And we don't want comp time. I don't think people should be getting comp time. They work their hours, they get paid their hours. So, and us being able to see it, I think it's important that we know what's being done and how it's being done. Just accountability.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Belbin, any comments on that, anyone? Mr. LaFon?
I mean, I hesitate to get involved in this conversation. However, I think this particular provision is really treating a professional like, like a very low-level clerical staff. That's my.
A low-level what?
Clerical staff. And that's not to denigrate clerical staff. And realistically, someone in this position doesn't work seven, eight hours a day. You hear late nights, you hear early, you're on weekends. And to be actually trying to keep a calendar of everything you do, everywhere you go, who you meet with, I don't think it's reasonable. And I, I do think that it shows, there's, I think, a lack of regard for the position to the extent that if you need this, then you've chosen the wrong candidate.
Right.
That's my, that's my feeling on it.
Yep, that's kind of my feeling about that, too. Although, I mean, I know where you're coming from, Bob, but I agree.
And personal benefits, personal benefits, they, those have to be recorded. I mean, those are kept on file with the town, so that, you know, obviously, that makes sense for every, every, everyone who works for the town.
Correct. But that's not something that goes into a bylaw. Everyone does that. So what I'm gonna do.
And may I just?
Yeah, yes.
I think just to, I mean, a provision like this, or something to do with conduct on the job, I think, I think that's more of a contractual agreement between the parties as opposed to something that's voted by the legislative body.
Mm-hmm.
I always, I know I come across as a policy wonk, but I think, always try to be cognizant of what the role of the legislative body is versus the role of the executive authority. And I don't believe the legislative authority should be directing the select board how to form a relationship with the town administrator. I think that's between these parties and not town meeting.
Right. And I think that we have to, one, one reason we have to work hard to keep ourselves on the straight and narrow is so that we can make sure we do that. We need to be able to trust ourselves.
I agree.
I have no problem with moving on.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Belbin. Appreciate it. So may I make a suggestion that we vote on these sections independently? So I'm gonna read them. First of all, there's the changing board of selectmen to select board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Townsend.
I wonder, this is such an important bylaw, I wonder if it wouldn't be prudent for us maybe to, I don't know, type up what we, what we agreed on and.
And vote on it afterwards.
And vote on it at the next meeting.
That's a very good, that's a very good idea. Because especially 3.3.1.1, I think there was a little disagreement about the appointing the interim TA if the need arises.
I wonder if perhaps we could talk a little more about 3.3.1.1, if that would be okay?
Mm-hmm.
I know it's sort of backtracking a little bit.
Yep.
But I wonder if there's some way of finding some kind of, of compromise language there that satisfies everyone, perhaps? You know, I was just thinking out, out here, perhaps the, the select board could have the flexibility to appoint an interim town administrator for up to six months? And maybe there could be wording that if it's longer than six months, then you need to go to a screening committee? Would, would that be something that people would feel would be, and maybe that's a compromise that we could work in there?
Well, I would, because I mean, the situation we were in before, we needed one like yesterday, and there was nothing to guide us on that. So the assumption was that we could do it on our own, which I, I think was the correct assumption.
Right.
But if we wanna, I think the compromise is, is a good one, because sometimes you have to do these things quickly. So I, I like the idea.
Okay.
Mr. Belbin.
I have no problem with that. We keep on saying that we're under the gun, we're under the gun for that, the last one. And I mean, I think the issue that we may have is that, do we have somebody within this town that in case something happens, that can step into that role? Do we have that person to step in the role inside our town?
I think the thing is, we're never going to know. And this is not a snapshot right now. This could come up three years from now, five years, 10 years. We don't, we don't know. We may have someone we feel comfortable with, we may not. We just don't, we don't know. That's why I'm hesitant to, to bind future select boards very rigidly, because I think sometimes you need the flexibility to operate in the situation you're in at the time, and we just don't know what that situation's going to be.
I agree. Mrs. Bogart?
I agree.
I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at Elaine, and her job title is assistant town administrator, not town administrator's assistant. So I would think, I, I don't see any reason why she couldn't be a potential candidate to step in. Like I said, other towns had police chiefs or stuff like, we actually have an assistant town administrator right now. So if we wouldn't trust that person to temporarily fill the official town administrator's role, why have an assistant town administrator? Like, you got a president, you got a vice president. Like, vice president takes over if something happens. Essentially, Elaine is the vice president, or anyone in that role.
But again, this is not saying we have to appoint an interim town administrator. It just says we, we can. We, we may have someone like Elaine that could just step in, but, but we may not. And we just, we just don't know.
Well, then we have.
Elaine may decide to move. So I, I prefer we don't talk about personalities, 'cause it's not about Elaine. It's about the position.
Mm-hmm.
And whoever's in that position now may not be there the next time that need arises. I think that's your.
That's exactly my point, yes.
So. So, so would the, okay, so, so this 3.3.1.1, the select board may appoint interim town administrator if the need arises for up to six months? And then a subcommittee will negotiate terms of the contract voted on by the select board. The select board shall appoint a full-time town administrator from a list prepared by a screening committee. Is that what everyone understands to be that section?
Yes.
Like, they'll, we, the select board can appoint an interim town administrator for six months, like while a screening committee does its thing?
Well.
Right?
It's, I don't know. That's up to the board.
Well, if we can't, well, see, that's, that'll give the board the six-month opportunity to say.
Right.
Okay, fine. Do we wanna go for just another interim position for longer than six months? All right, because like the prior contract may have been a three-year contract, left a year and a half, so we got a year and a half left technically, if you wanna do that semantic-wise. But it gives that option. I, I don't, I don't have a problem either way, if it's going for an interim or not. But we have to understand that it may be also on contracts that the person may have with another town. I mean.
Okay, so shall we just leave it, the select board may appoint an interim town administrator if the need arises for up to six months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with that.
Section 3.3.1.2, "Select board shall appoint the town administrator to serve for," where do we leave this? "Up to five years, and shall fix compensation for such person annually." Within the amount appropriated by the town. At no time shall the town administrator contract be more than five years. Is that what we?
Yeah.
Agreed? Salary shall not be renegotiated yearly. And the term cannot be extended, the term of the contract cannot be extended until the last year of the contract.
Correct.
Is that everyone's understanding here?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Go back, I'm sorry, go back.
I'm sorry.
3.3.1.1.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just saying the select board may appoint an interim, interim town administrator if the needs arise, if the need arises for up to six months?
Correct.
And that's it? So the subcommittee will negotiate terms of the contract? That's not part of that?
Yes, that's in there, too.
Yeah. Do we have to define who, who the subcommittee is?
It would be one, it would be us that would be negotiating.
So let's put that in. Let's not say that.
The select board would be negotiating.
Or a select board?
So it should say a subcommittee of the select board.
Okay. That's what it's just supposed to be.
No, good point, yes.
Good point, yeah.
Section 3.3.2.1, "Educational qualifications shall consist of a master's degree, preferably in public business administration, et cetera." The professional experience shall include at least, and we've kept that at five years?
I thought four, but.
Well, I'm sorry, which one are we on?
3.3.2.1.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board wants there. If they, I'm.
Well, I, you know, I made my preference known. I think it should be at least five years. But let's decide, so we'll know what we're typing up for our next meeting.
You know what, the five years may be, upon further review, the five years may be a better, better idea there, yes. I, I agree.
Thank you. And then section 3.3.2.2, we changed that from three back up to four.
Four.
Is that correct? Okay. And then, second page, section 3.3.3.4, we have cut the line that says, well, I'll read it. "The town administrator shall devote full-time to the office and shall not hold any other public office elected or appointed, or engage in any business or occupation during such service. Volunteering is exempt." And the phrase that has been cut is, from the first sentence, "unless such action be approved in advance by the select board." Is that everybody's understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Last, section 3.4.4.4, we, Bob has withdrawn this proposal.
Yep.
Okay. I hope we have that.
Thank you.
Down, and at our next meeting, maybe we can vote this. Mrs. Bogart?
Just give me clarity, explain it, 'cause I'm not in your head. So the, the 3.3.1.1, that six months that the select board can appoint an interim, what happens during those six months or at the end of that six months?
Well, I think the rest of the bylaw says it. So if you want a permanent one, you have to get a search committee.
Okay.
So presumably, you're gonna do it during the six months and not wait till one week in advance, or?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if you think that needs more clarity.
Well, like, at the end of six months, can another six months be granted if there's not a full-time in place? I just, I'm trying to avoid the ambiguity here. I'm trying to.
I would think so. I mean, I mean, it says we can appoint an interim TA if the needs arises for up to six months. It doesn't say only once.
So six months at a time?
That's the implication, if you'd like to make that more clear.
Well, if it is up to six months, okay, well, you, select board, you had six months, you gotta get us a full-time guy now. What if the select board isn't ready?
Right.
So might want to, six months at a time. In that six months, if the select board doesn't do it, select board needs more time, so we can get six more months. But by saying just six months, that kind of limits the board to just one six-month period.
Okay, so you'd like to insert at a time at the end of that?
Well, just to take away any sort of, what are you doing?
I mean, I think you need some guideline for what to do, because you could be in a situation where the screening committee chooses a candidate, and that candidate chooses to take another job in your left.
Right. That's a good point, too. Very good point. Yeah. So I like, I like this, it being able to extend it.
It does say far up to six months, so it's not like a six month and that's.
That's true.
Right.
You can go up to six months.
But if you.
Second time.
If six months wasn't enough, you gotta give yourself the option for a six-month, you know, extension, six months at a time.
Exactly.
I just don't want the select board to be limited to one six-month appointment.
Yep, I think we got that.
Okay.
And there are other circumstances that you may not, that I think we've all seen. You could have someone that becomes incapacitated.
Mm-hmm.
And for a period of time, and you don't know how long that's gonna be. You don't know if you can expect someone to return. I think we've all seen it in our, both in government and beyond. So I think there are circumstances that, you know, you may be focused on the normal 90% of the time it's gonna happen this way, but it doesn't always happen that way.
That's right.
So I just think we need to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, in fact, I, I know of a town, which will remain unnamed, where someone has continued to have to be reappointed as interim because of that exact situation. Okay, thank you, everybody. Mrs. Weston, are you all set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator update?
I have a couple things for you at the moment. Number one, our recurring CARES Act update. I will be, we've just submitted this week, another request, our seventh. This is for $313,000. And this is primarily for cleaning materials, PEP, also for some staff, the school department. This will bring us to, as you know, we have an allotment of about $1.7 million. And by the way, I'll send you a copy of this, cover sheet of this latest request. About $1.7 million. We now will be about $250,000 short of that limit. That's assuming everything that we have submitted is approved. I suspect, because the scrutiny's very tight, that there's probably going to be some of that that's not going to be approved. I hate to put an estimate on that, because it would seem like they're not legitimate, but as Mr. O'Brien, Treasurer Tom O'Brien, has said to many towns from the beginning, that what may be appropriate and an allowable reimbursable expense in one town may not be in another town. Depends on those factors, so. But we think, you know, when getting down to that margin of $250,000, when we still have through this coming December of 2021 to try and address any needs that come up, at this point, my inclination, in discussing this with Meg and some department heads, is basically to, you know, let's put the brakes on at this moment for a little while. Let's see what other needs we do have. There are still unemployment claims we may be seeing, and other, some of those recurring, recurring costs, whether it's staff, or whether it's, again, cleaning supplies, those aren't gonna stop. So before we start looking at other types of larger projects, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we, we don't have a big margin, and it's gonna, has to last us a little while, and this is changing almost every day, every week. That being said, we only have two checks in the bank. We still have five other applications pen, four other pending, and this will, this will be five, five pending. I know there are a lot of people who have a lot of checks waiting for them, you know, on the way, so to speak. So we're not unusual. But we have two that are being, beyond the second stage now of review by the county, so, although that doesn't mean we'll get them next week, but it does, it does mean that hopefully, within a few weeks, we'll at least have our third check. Keeping in mind that we obviously want the money, we're gonna get the money, but it's not like we need that money to operate. That's reimbursement for funds that have already been expended. So as I said, I'll send you this, this cover sheet that was sent in this, this past week, just so you get a sense again of what, what types of activities we're, we're looking for reimbursement for. we're, we're looking for reimbursement for.
Mr. Hoffman.
I've got a quick question. I know we've talked about it before, but as far as the, across the street at, at the Sherliffe Park for.
Yes.
For doing that, for rehabbing that, has that been?
That's pending, that is one, that was on our last request. So that's a, that is being reviewed.
Okay. So we have submitted for that?
Yes, we have.
Because I think this will be around for a little bit longer than people expected. I think having that updated.
Sure.
Especially for the seniors and any groups who want to use it. I think that'll be huge.
I, I would agree. And I think we have a good proposal. We've got some pretty, pretty good numbers. You know, the question is going to be ultimately is, you know, do we go ahead and do it in advance of knowing specifically that it's going to be approved? That's a tactical question. But I, it is, it has been submitted. And again, we, we think it's a good project. So let's hope the county does.
Well, I guess I have a question. I thought, so the project doesn't have to be done? It's not a bill, something that's been done?
Yes and no. Yes, that, it is, essentially, it's a reimbursement program.
Right.
However, there are those times when we, we are seeking to know in advance, if possible, if something's going to be approved. So.
Okay.
In this case, we're going to have to wait and see. But we've reserved, you know, in our, I say, in our ledger, so to speak, we've reserved that amount and consider it an expenditure and a reimbursement we will be getting back. So as, when I say we've got $250,000 buffer, we're assuming that that's going to be acceptable expense.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else on CARES Act at the moment? The next item here is Plymouth Street Waterline Update. And there is nothing new to report. And of course, I just want to refresh people's memory that we do have, I believe it's, we're getting to that place already. But in March 1, we, the bids are due. They have to be opened on March 8. So we're kind of waiting with bated breath to see how much, what we're looking for so that we can prepare for, for town meeting. I almost wish it were yesterday, you know, to help us, help us put preparations, you know, where we need them. So, so that's the, that's the looming situation. We do have the requirement to seek an appropriation from town meeting by April 30. What our administrative consent order doesn't say is what happens if the town doesn't appropriate those funds. So I, I don't, I know me and members of this board are going to advocate as hard as necessary to make sure that happens. So I don't see that being an issue. But I just think the caveat is in here. I think we need to be aware of that, that we can't take it for granted, that we're not going to have to advocate for this strongly.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Belbin.
Um, with that, we got a message from you that the water, the water results.
Yes.
Most recent one. Was that, there was found of nothing in there? Or was it just, quote, below the reported levels?
I only know what the engineer reported to me, Bob. And that was the exact language. The, the testing itself, the results of the testing, the technical results, I'm not qualified to read those. Certainly happy to forward those along to the board. But I'm, as I say, all I can do is really report what the engineer says. Again, I'm not, not qualified to interpret the reports.
Okay.
And what was it that the engineer said?
Want to repeat that, Bob? You did such a good.
I'd have to go back to my email.
You did such an eloquent job the first time.
Yeah, gee, all right.
Oh.
Water street tests.
Elaine beat you to it.
Oh, man.
Yes.
It's loading. I am informed by the town's consultant engineer that there is no detection for any of the tested parameters during this round for any of the homes within the required testing area in the Plymouth Street area. Similar to prior.
Yeah. So it's better than not being reportable. It's now undetectable.
Exactly.
So that's a good thing.
So that's, that is good news. So I will have it for the record. Elaine did beat you to the punch. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Lefan.
The last thing I have here, and quite frankly, I'm not sure how this got here. Solar pilot programs and new solar project updates. I would, as far as new projects, we don't, I don't have any pending right now. I do have a request from a proponent for some of the copies of our existing agreements. I don't know what the location is, but it's my understanding that in a reasonably near future, there's going to be some proposal for another project. Again, I don't have that at the moment. But when, when people start inquiring, it's obviously there's an intent, intent to do something in the near, reasonably near future. The, as far as the, again, we have one, I think I reported some time ago that we had that question or dispute over what is exempt?
Right.
Whether, you know, if 61A land is, is exempt and, you know, at what point is a solar project the primary use of the property? We do have one case still out there. And we have asked, obviously, for the, for the owner to at least make a proposal. Let's see if there's something we can do, especially where the state legislation that has, has passed. You know, I think the, by the end of December, the end of the legislative session, will help to clarify, will clarify some of that.
Good.
As I, trying to think, the, the good news is that we have the ability to actually predict and some new growth this year from several projects that we expect to be online during the year. Last year, we had, in the FY '21 budget process, there had been anticipated, projected about $400,000 and change for growth funds that would come from those projects. And those were delayed, presumably because of the conditions we've been living in. So as you may recall, the end of last fiscal year, we had to try to find a way to plug a substantial gap. This year, we don't have, although we're still projecting modestly, we have every reason to believe that those will be online this year and we'll experience the, the growth from that. Last thing, I don't have it on here, but budget process is moving along. The Finance Committee will meet Monday night and then the following Monday night to, to hopefully wrap up their conversations with departments, including the school on March 1. Then we'll be looking to have a joint meeting of the boards to have a conversation about that. I will be forwarding to the board, either tonight or tomorrow, an update on some other issues, some of which were prob, are more appropriate for executive session. But not at a point where an executive session is really of, of any value. So there are a couple items pending. And I will forward those, those updates to you in a confidential memo to the board, which confidential for a period of time until all met as a resolve. It's not a secret memo. It's a confidential memo.
Right.
I want to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Lefan.
Madam Chair, just one thing on the pilot.
Yes. Mr. Belbin.
Um, just, I kind of, in case there's any pilot program that comes forward between now and town meeting, my suggestion is we wait until town meeting, because there are some articles pertaining to solar projects on our town meeting warrant. And we want to make sure that those are taken care of at town meeting before we go into any agreements. Just my opinion.
And I, I believe, Bob, that realistically, knowing how long these projects take to develop, I don't, I suspect we won't have that concern. But if we do, I'll certainly defer to your judgment on these, on that.
Thank you, Ms. Lefan. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting will be March 2, 2021.
Can I?
Mrs. Bogart.
Can I request that either our meeting be held earlier in the evening or another day? Because that same time, March 2, at 7, the Planning Board, I know, has their zoning bylaw public hearings. And that's a pretty important one. So I would, I would like to not see those meetings happen at the same time.
So the Planning Board has that at 7?
Yeah.
Okay. So what is the, yeah, and I know that's going to be a Zoom meeting.
Okay. They, they said it's going to be in room four. So they had planned on being in room four that day because we were going to be here.
I don't think they can meet in room four. It's just too small.
Oh, that's what they said at their last meeting. I, I just heard them say it.
We had an email discussion, I believe, and.
Okay.
I think you did.
Miss, I think the Planning Board was requesting to have this room.
Okay.
So maybe we should reschedule.
Or just a morning, a morning meeting?
We could have it in, if people are willing to do it in the morning.
What date is that? I'm sorry. I'll begin my.
March 2.
March 2.
Now, it's a Tuesday. I would not be able to do it unless it was very early or very late in the morning on Tuesday.
I can be flexible that day.
I'm flexible. Till 2 o'clock.
Madam Chair, I, I'm flexible as well. And, and I'm willing to have a morning meeting. But I, I really think so the public can, can see us either on Area 58 or, I think we should keep with evening meetings. I, I really do.
Mm-hmm.
Just my.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm fine with that. It's, and I know, Bob, you have an issue with the evening. Any other, um, is there any other evening that you guys could do it? It's not a lot of notice for. But I was willing to change that meeting date because the Planning Board, they just need a bigger room. And it's a public hearing, so they're going to have people.
Yeah.
If, I mean, if there's no other evenings.
I can meet anytime on the 2nd or the 9th.
Oh, you could?
Well, I work the 6th and the 7th. I have Tuesdays off on the 6th and 9th.
So you could meet Tuesday afternoon on the, on the 2nd?
Yeah.
That's excellent. Does that work for everybody? Any particular time? 1, 2?
I know we want evening meetings, but I think an exception for this is okay. Like I said, I'm, I'm flexible that Tuesday.
And it will be televised, so, I mean.
Could we do it later on, on the 2nd? Maybe 4 o'clock? Would that be too late for people? Would that be okay?
That's fine.
That's fine with me. Everybody good with that? Okay. So that's Tuesday, March 2 at 4:00 p.m. right here. And I'm sure we'll be out of here before 7:00, so. Great.
So.
Okay.
I have one thing.
Mr. Belbin, last thing.
Because we talked, we did talk about this with the prior thing. I think that we have to start looking at now of creating a subcommittee for hiring a new Town Administrator process.
But this is not on the agenda.
No, I understand. But we talked about it tonight with this other bylaw. And I just want three other members.
We moved on.
Can we put it on the agenda for the next three, three members to approve it?
We can discuss that at another time. And you can ask for that to be on the Select Board notes.
I did, I did ask to be put on the agenda for that. And it was declined. So I'm just asking for three members to also say.
That's correct. Mr. Belbin, this is not on the agenda. I'm sorry, we can't discuss this now. And I explained to you why I declined it for this particular meeting. Thank you. Minutes, approval and release of April 16, 20, executive session minutes. Is there a motion? There's no motion.
I have to abstain. I wasn't on the board.
Okay.
Me as well.
Yeah. Been a while since you've approved a minute since.
Yeah. As I, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Prove, a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving and releasing the 4/16/20 executive session minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes 3.02. Okay. The minutes of 12, December the 4, 2020, December 15, 2020, January 19, 2021, and 2.21. I would ask, once again, that we table February 2, 2021. But we can move forward, as far as I'm concerned, with the other three?
I'm making motion to approve December 4.
I'll second.
Motion, motion made and seconded to approve December 4, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously.
Motion to approve December 15.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Motion to approve December 19. I'm sorry, January 19.
Right, right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And could I have a motion to table February 2, 21?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling 2.21?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Select Board community announcements? Mr. Belbin?
Um, I just can't wait for the Council on Aging Coffee Hour to come back. I'm hoping that comes back soon so seniors can meet. I do have a question. Is the warrant, is the warrant actually closed for town meeting?
It closed on February 5.
So the, well, I have an issue then. The Planning Board has notices saying that they have articles they're putting on the town meeting that they're going to be talking about.
They have placeholders.
And there's no placeholders for them.
Do we know that?
No, there have been placeholders in the draft I gave you.
There's always placeholders for departments.
Yeah.
The draft article doesn't relate to a couple of the articles that they're going to be discussing.
They gave me everything that they were going to advertise in it.
Okay.
Well, actually, this is, really isn't a community announcement either.
All right.
So can we move on?
There's a question.
Mrs. Bogart?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Townsend?
I have nothing.
Okay, great. I, I just have a quick one. I wanted to let people know that I'm having Select Board office hours. Don't know whether anyone will come. But I'm going to try it on Zoom. And Monday mornings from 10:30 to 11:00. And then Thursday night from 6:00 to 6:30. So I'm waiting for the crowds.
How will people get in touch with you?
Ah, good question. You have to go to my website, which is sarahhewens.com. And it's two H's with no dots or no nothing in the middle. So that's how you get there. Thank you. And there are apparently no Select Board notes this evening. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay. Thank you all. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.